Hello, everyone. The Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Gottlieb.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Mayor.
Here.
Commissioner Otteway. Mayor Pro Tem Schlegel.
Here.
And Mayor Hanley.
Here. Commissioners, may I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Otteway? Commissioner Gottlieb?
So, excuse Commissioner Otteway.
For personal reasons. Perfect. Do I have a second? Commissioner Larson?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, that moves us. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. Do I have a motion on the agenda? Pro Tem Schlegel?
I'd make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Perfect. Any discussion? All right. All in favor? Please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes six to zero. I have no announcements today, which moves us on to boards and committees. Tonight, we have one appointment and four reappointments. Commissioners, do I have a motion on the appointment? Commissioner Davis?
I move that we appoint, we recommend the appointment of Jamie Glenn to this, as this Marquette City represented on the Marquette County Transit Authority for a term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-seven.
Perfect. Do we have a second? Commissioner Gottlieb?
A second.
Perfect. Any discussion?
No, I'm really glad she's willing to serve, and it's important that we have knowledgeable people serving on that, at that authority.
Perfect. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Now to the reappointments. Do I have a motion on reappointments? Commissioner Larson?
I move that we reappoint Dallas Fetter to the Planning Commission for a term ending in February fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-eight. Margaret Rayner to the Planning Commissioner for a term ending February fifteen of two thousand and twenty-eight. And Robert Kuleszek to the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a term ending February first two thousand and twenty-eight. And Charles Clecha to the Downtown Development Authority for a term ending January first, two thousand and twenty-nine.
Perfect. Do we have a second? Pro Tem Schlegel?
Second motion.
Perfect. Any discussion?
Only thanks to, thanks for serving another reimportment, a reappointment, another term to each of these committees. Very important to keep our city moving forward.
Any other discussion? Yes?
I want to commend Dr. Kuleszek. He's been on the City Commission before, many years ago, and in fact, he's still active in the city. It's just amazing.
Perfect. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, this brings us to our first public comment of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when addressing the commission. Do we have anyone for public comment this evening?
Bar Boudzai, thirteen twenty-four North Front Street. Hello. I'm, just wanted to make a comment about the solid waste contract. I know you've, you're going to talk about it tonight. So I'm just hoping somebody, you guys just bring, I just had a couple questions, and I hope you discuss these when I, when you discuss this. And the reason why I'm kind of interested in it is I'm involved in the battery recycling thing that we do out once a month, you know, taping up batteries to get them, keep them out of the landfill. Anyway, when I look at this contract, first, the thing I was wondering about was, and I don't know if this, well, let me, let me just say, you know, that I noticed that they're doing the sixty-four and the ninety-six gallon containers. They no longer offer the thirty-five gallon garbage containers. I'm lucky enough to have one, but I wonder why, and then maybe we're just appeasing, it's easier for waste management to pick up the container if it's larger, but it makes me wonder why we don't encourage less trash by providing smaller containers. I did live in a community where the garbage container was tiny, recycling was huge, and, you know, it just, when you, you've got that limitation, it, it makes people, I think, a little more conscious of that. And there was a thirty-five gallon container when they first started the program, but it looks like that's no longer. So I'm hoping you tell me why that, you know, what the deal is there. The other thing I was wondering about was the, the off-street park, or prohibiting the parking on the streets during the nights the garbage pickup is. I'm wondering, obviously, in the winter, it's not going to be a problem, but are they really, is, again, are you, is that realistic to think that the, you know, law enforcement will be able to do that? How will they do that? Or, I'm just curious about that, too. So I'm hoping that when you discuss this, you kind of talk about that. And the other thing I want to say is, I mean, I'm glad that they're getting rid of the garbage bags. You know, I recognize that it may be a limitation for some people with those big containers, but it seems like in terms of home ownership and taking care of home things, it's not a hu, I mean, I don't want to sound insensitive, but pushing a garbage container out to the curb is only a small part of owning, you know, maintaining independence. So, anyway, I'm glad that they're doing that. I think it'll keep a lot of crap off the streets. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Do we have anyone else for public comment tonight?
Good evening. Orville National, eighteen oh-two Kimber, Marquette. I guess my concern is also on the contract, on the picking up the garbage. Something I've brought up before, and I guess, being as this is on the agenda, every time I go out to pick up my empty container, I look on the street and I see a trail of either oil or something that was left by the garbage truck. Possibly fluid from the hydraulic system or something like that, but it increases each time. If you go down, I live on Kimber, so you go down Kimber Avenue, and that's all I see is a trail of whatever it is on there. So if we're talking to these people, it might, I brought this up before, and I've always got a courteous response, but the problem is still there. So I'm, I'm asking somebody to do something about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? All right, with that public comment, we'll be closed. This brings us to our presentations. We have three presentations tonight. The first will be by the Upper Peninsula Children's Museum with guardian recognition for Natalie and Lincoln. Mr. Jim, would you like to come on up?
Mayor Commissioners, thank you. We are playing catch-up with recognizing these youth volunteers that help run the Children's Museum, and so I have two tonight. And although we're catching up, these youngsters have only been there this year, this past year. So I know Lincoln joined us in early summer, but has now steadfastly become the Saturday manager of what happens at the museum. But for Natalie, it was a long time waiting to turn eight and become a lady that just takes charge. It's her work, it's her job. And so these two youngsters are wonderful, and I would recommend them to you for guardian of the quarter, youth volunteer leadership. Do you want to say something? You don't?
They didn't prepare a speech.
No speeches.
Perfect. Well, first, Commissioner, do we have any comments for these lovely youthful volunteers? Commissioner Davis? Did you have one?
I guess.
You were at the end of your microphone.
You know, I, is it Natalie? I can't see you, but hi, Natalie. I think the two of you should be very proud. It's not very many students or youth like you that get to come to the City Commission meeting and get recognized, and it's so important that people like you are leaders in our community for our future. So thank you.
All right. Any other Commissioners? I do have some fun things to bring up to you guys. I will say that I am very biased in how much I like these kids and the work that they do at the Children's Museum. Oh, I got this. All right. Who wants to go first?
Lincoln.
Perfect. Well, first, you get a City of Marquette pin, and each of you get a lovely cupcake. And then Lincoln, you get this one. Here, let's stand up here so your mom can get a good picture. Get Mr. Jim in here. Natalie, you want to be in, too? Here, why don't we take one which is Lincoln, and then you can be the next one? All right, you're shaking your head. Good job. All right, Natalie, you ready? Here is your City of Marquette pin, and your, and let's get one for your dad, too. All right, congratulations. And here are your cupcakes for each of you. Thank you for being here. All right, the second presentation that we have this evening is another fun one. This one is for recognition of city retirees, Mike Parsons and Mike Kovell by Scott Kenpenzie.
Mayor and City Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to recognize a couple of very hard-working, prideful, retiring Public Works employees. Mike Kovell started with the City of Marquette in January of two thousand and five, so he is just completing his twentieth year. He started in Parks and Rec as a maintenance mechanic, and soon found that there is some reorganization going on at the time. And then he moved in, transitioned into a heavy equipment operator, and there was a little bit more internally that was going on in October, two thousand and twelve, and he was reassigned to Public Works where he spent the last thirteen years of his, his career. Mike is the guy that will come in whenever he's asked. He will do whatever he's, he's asked to do. Just a fantastic employee. I went back and looked at a few of his, his reviews through the years, and he was referred to as one of the most reliable employees we have, always having a positive attitude and eagerness to learn. Interestingly enough, when he first started, they, they give all the employees a, a practical test, just to, you know, see where they're at. His assignment for the day was to take apart the flushing mechanism on a toilet. And out of all the people that applied when he came through, he had never done any of that type of work before, but he managed to take it apart without any fear and get it repaired and put it back together, and he did it very quickly. So congratulations to Mike Kovell for twenty fantastic years with the City of Marquette. And the second employee is, is Mike Parsons. He had just over thirty-four years with the City of Marquette, so that is a very long, lengthy career. He began with the City of Marquette in nineteen ninety as a laborer, and about ten years later, he transitioned into a heavy equipment operator, and then he spent about seven years as the utility locator. A very important job, making sure that all our underground utilities are located before we dig or do any of that type of work in the, the streets. And then he went back to being a heavy equipment operator for about six more years. In the last nine years, he's spent as a, the sign technician responsible for upkeep of all the signs and designing a lot of the road closures and that type of stuff. He's really done a fantastic job of, of learning the, the manual for traffic closures and all that type of stuff. He's also completed coursework for soil erosion and sedimentation control. And he was also the two thousand and three Kiwanis DPW Employee of the Year. Going back through a few of his reviews, he's been referred to as a mentor for a lot of the younger employees coming in. Well, I guess if you're there for, for that long, you're kind of the, the top dog and, and get a chance to work with a lot of the younger employees. So that's, that's been fantastic. Very conscientious with safety, and at times has kind of been referred to as a historian. You know, some of these guys that have been around that long, they are just a, a wealth of knowledge. And a couple of short stories with Mike, and they, they kind of apply to a few others, too, but, you know, they, when I, when I started, I, I was a little bit younger than a lot of them, and so you got to learn the lingo that they all speak. And so when I got in there, all the different pieces of equipment were referred to by a three-digit number. And I was like, you got to be kidding me. You got like two hundred pieces of equipment, and you're going to refer to them all by a three-digit number. Even the police cars were referred to by a three-digit number, and I'm like, I don't know about this. But little by little, I, I caught on. And the, the second quick story was how they described locations. They didn't use addresses. And I was like, oh, this is going to be interesting. Most locations around the city were referred to as through the backyard of Joe's mother's house, or, you know, kitty corner to Paul's house, or, or whatever. I mean, and I was like, you got to be kidding me. How, how do I, how do I translate this back so that I could report where things are going on and that? But just incredible knowledge, and that's, that's what they possess. And, you know, it's, it's been very interesting to, to learn, and, and we're getting down to the last of the, the guys that actually, you know, kind of talked that lingo and referred to different locations of where somebody grew up and, and, you know, or where so-and-so used to work, or whatever. But thank you, Mike and Mike, for a lot of great service to the city, the residents, I'm sure. Very thankful for all the, the work you've done through the years. And, and again, thank you, Mayor and City Commission, for this opportunity to recognize them.
Any comments from the commission on that? Pro Tem Schlegel?
Yeah, I just would like to thank both Mike and Mike for, for their commitment, dedication to the community. What they do for us on a daily basis is really, keeps us all running, keeps us all moving, and it's pretty special. And I've been lucky enough over the years to serve with a number of these other, I'm going to call them characters, because they really are characters throughout the community. And, and I, I, I've had the same conversations with a number of them where they refer to things, you know, well, the, the only spot left where there's, there's wooden infrastructure, or something along those lines. They just know all of the ins and outs of all of the City of Marquette. And it's, I'm glad that you brought that up, Scott, and then shared that with us, because, you know, it is part of the legacy that they leave behind us as far as serving the community, and I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, perfect. I would also like to express my thanks. I made a very quiet comment, but serious one during the second one, where the thirty-four years is older than Commissioner Mayor is old. So we like, just to point that out. But no, it's great to see people staying with the city for that long, and the institutional knowledge that they have will definitely be missed. So I wish them the best. All right, moving on, that, we have our third and final presentation of the evening, which is from the Board of Review by Chair Justin Vessa. Hi, Justin. It's a great presentation. It is really quiet all of a sudden.
Yeah, I don't know what that's about.
Oh, Taylor's coming in to help, but.
Yep.
No, he's right across the hall.
Taylor came in from his house for that.
With the save. All right.
So how do you get it to back up to the beginning? Just want to say good evening to everyone. Just want to spend a minute, Chair of the Board of Review for the City of Marquette, which is taxation for part, your property taxes. This is the annual requirement. There's be, we presented the City Commission. The background, Board of Review members, we have two vacancies, so if anyone wants to apply, come on in. We're more welcome to. I serve with two wonderful people, diverse opinions, diverse experiences, diverse talents, which lends to the purpose and goals. It's established pursuant to the City Charter, section eight dash four, which parallels requirements set forth in Michigan codified laws, section two one one, point two two, or two nine. Board of Appeal, here's appeals on property assessments. March Board of Review is specific to property owners protesting valuations and classifications. July and December Boards of Review are specific to correction of clerical errors, mutual mistakes of fact. All Boards of Review consider poverty exemptions. Assessing Department, I just want to say, for the people that are here, that work within the city, such as on the City Commission, I think you have a very qualified staff. I think, I'll just, I'll just go out with some of the, I've had interactions with all these. They're very professional, they're very competent, they're very talented in what they do, and they're very experienced, and they're very passionate about what they do. We have five meetings scheduled for two thousand and twenty-five, the last meeting to be held on December ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Those are set forth in pretty much all this stuff here. Lot of stuff goes on behind the scenes that the staff tends to, such as Amanda, Delsey, and some other people that work there. There's a lot of things that go on. This is pretty much breaking down what the Board of Review can and cannot do, such as assessed value and/or tentative taxable value. Board of Review, March two thousand and twenty-five. Treasury, no review authority, get into the State Treasury, State Tax Commission, which is kind of what we work with. And then there's the other one, the Tax Tribunal. If you feel you're still not treated fairly, or you still want to protest beyond the Board of Review, that is a remedy and relief that you can employ. And then types of appeal goes down. Here again, states, Board of Review, the meetings they can be done at. Two thousand and twenty-five, qualified agricultural property exemptions is another thing that we deal with. And here again, type of appeal, Board of Review, Treasury, State Tax Commission, Tax Tribunal. They all kind of work in synergy. Components of taxable value, it's just getting into the various whatevers. Residential makes up the vast, vast majority. Commercial, followed by industrial, and various other ones. Utility and personal, stuff like that, commercial, personal property. Components of assessed value, that's pretty much what they get into, includes the specific tax parcels. State equalized value, so on and so forth, by property class. Two thousand and twenty-four, year parcel count by class, seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-two, seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-two total parcels. Residential, commercial, commercial, personal, other, and exempt. Exempt parcels, four hundred and five. Examples of exempt property are City of Marquette-owned property, State of Michigan-owned property, Northern Michigan University-owned property, Marquette County-owned property. March Board of Petitions, two thousand and twenty-four was fairly busy, with a hundred and twenty-two were filed. As you can see here, they go up and down from ninety-five to a hundred and three to a hundred and fifty-seven back in two thousand and eighteen. Relationship of Board of Review, this is a good little teeter totter. You have the assessor, you have the taxpayer in here. We don't really necessarily back up anybody. We're just the remedy and relief. As far as I'm concerned, anybody comes in and comes to the Board of Review, they are challenging the assessor. That's just what I'm, that's just what I'm thinking. So, yeah, the Tax Tribunal. General information, meetings may be few, but workload can be very heavy, which it is, depending on year. So having said that, it's been a pleasure to serve. I look forward to continue serving. Do you have any questions?
That was very fast, but also very informative.
Okay.
So I think you did great.
All right. I used to give this presentation when I was on the zoning board of appeals. I was always the chair when I came around, and I was like, boom, just. I was always the chair when I came around, and I was like, boom, just wing it, just make it sound good.
You did a great job doing that, and no questions, you did real good.
Yeah, so I can just see, I can hear something about date accent, what? No, I don't know. So, again, thank you for your time, and thank you for your patience. So, have a good night.
You as well, thank you, Justin.
You're welcome.
All right, with that, Commissioners, we have a consent agenda in front of us. Do I have a motion? Pro temp Schlegel?
I'd make the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
None.
Okay. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion passes six to zero. This brings us to our new business, item number seven, the contract extension and amendment for BP 17-11 solid waste collection services, curbside residential. City Clerk, could you read the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The term of the current contract for curbside residential collection services ran October 1, 2017, through September 30, 2024. Staff exercised the right to extend the contract by 180 days for continuance of services at the current rates, while the details of the extension and amendment were negotiated. The contract was amended four times previously to address tipping fee increases from the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority, and to move from green bags to garbage stickers. The attached Fifth Amendment addresses the payment of tipping fees, transitioning to a fully carted collection, hours of collection, on-street parking during hours of collection, and the term of the extension. The contract amendment will commence immediately upon approval and run through September 30, 2029. It is the intention of city staff to go out for bids for a new contract to commence October 1, 2029. Fiscal effect: curbside solid waste collection services are paid by collecting resident user fees. The user fees will be adjusted to reflect the new rate structure and will have no fiscal effect on the city budget. Recommendation: approve the Fifth Amendment to the agreement with waste management for solid waste collection, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the amendment. Alternatives: create updated specifications for curbside residential solid waste collection and request bids, or as determined by the Commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this? Commissioner Gottlieb?
For purposes to get the discussion going, I move that we approve the contract extension amendment for BP 17-11 solid waste collection services, curbside residential.
All right, do we have a second? Pro temp Schlegel?
Second motion.
Perfect. All right, end discussion. You can start us off. Commissioner Gottlieb?
Well, I'd like to thank the citizens who came forth and with their concerns about this. I, too, share concerns about the contract, and made the motion simply to get the discussion going. And I'm going to use myself and my wife as an example, as I go through some of my problems here. The, and tell me if you want me to break this into parts, or?
Just go for it.
The current tag price for bags is $1.35 per piece. That's one bag. We, my wife and I, for instance, are a two-person older couple. We don't have kids in the house, we don't have a dog in the house, it's just us. We don't buy much, we're at the end of our buying careers, end of our buying life, we're, we don't even have Amazon Prime. We put out a bag about every other week. So we spend about $2.70 a month for garbage. Given this contract, and not counting our solid waste disposal fee billed monthly on our utility bill, our fee is going to go up about 400%, or the equivalent of two bags of garbage per week. And I don't see what the advantage to the city is to go to a fully carted pickup as opposed to bags, or tags, if you prefer. And if there is no financial or social advantage to the city, then this doesn't, doesn't this put the excess burden on the citizens who produce the least amount of garbage? The people who recycle the most, the people who reuse the most, people who purchase less? And also, doesn't it place the burden on those who leave Marquette for long periods of time, our snowbirds? They're going to be paying the exact same amount of money every month. I don't think this is a really fair way to do it. I think, as pointed out, this is penalizing those of us who produce less garbage.
I think I can kick that over to the city manager's office to answer that, because there is actually a good answer to that one, I believe.
I don't know if it's too bold to say, I wish we had a lot of people that, similar to what we heard in public comment as well, that recycle more than they throw into the landfill. We do hear from residents quite a bit on that. Unfortunately, the cost for the charge, or the fee that was set for the bag tags years ago, was set artificially low, as they were going to a pay-as-you-throw-away program. That was no longer sustainable, and no longer really assisting in covering the cost to even dispose of that one garbage bag. And as we moved into then the cart system with the recycling, there is some efficiency that is really created, quite a bit of efficiency created, with moving towards the cart system as it relates to the carrier or the hauler picking up the garbage cans on that side of things. It will also streamline the fee structure for many of the residents that have those carts already, or that utilize those carts already, and that will be moving towards them now. So you'll see a little bit more of that fee structure for what I would say is a bulk of the residents. And then also, unfortunately, there are some that would then say you have a cart for your one bag of trash per, every other week. And we've heard that similarly with, I think even with the recycling as well, when people said, can I not do the recycling? I don't have that much. And the answer was really just pulling out that recycling cart as you need it. The other option is, you can also utilize the transfer station. Unfortunately, the fee structure will be the same as well. So, in the sense that you cannot go, you cannot be charged for just what bag you throw away, you would be charged the one fee, which also includes the use of that transfer station as well as a resident. Does that make sense? I see. No?
City Manager Kovacs, can I?
Will you please?
Yeah, I'd just like to make two points real quick. First, you know, you made the point that the price of the bag has been kept artificially low. This is kind of a holdover, I think, in the waste management practice. And we really try to maintain that service for our residents as long as possible. But regardless of how this proceeds, if bags are even allowed in any contract moving forward, the price would significantly increase. So you would not be, you know, saving any money by using that bag system. But more to the point, the fee charge represents a cost of service fee, much like we have fixed charges with our water. And, you know, you bring up snowbirds, like, much like, snowbirds pay taxes all year round, even though they don't necessarily benefit from plowed streets, right? It is the cost to provide garbage service to the entire city of Marquette 12 months of the year. So that's just, a couple of points I wanted to be made, is those bag prices, those sticker prices, have been kept artificially low, and they would go up no matter how we proceed, if they were even allowed in a contract. And you need to have this cost to make, you know, garbage pickup a profitable venture that we're able to contract out, and therefore get service to everybody within our city.
And Deputy City Manager Habinz touched on a really important point there, in saying that this has been the standard practice for many of the haulers that we have been seeing, and that we have talked with, with our peer communities downstate and even around here as well. In the township, they had just moved to the cart system as well. And that is just the direction that these are heading towards.
And the, some, the, most of the trucks being made now don't even necessarily have the ability to throw bags of garbage into them. They're built for the cart lift and dump over, because that's the established safe procedure for garbage removal. They're really moving away from having the guys picking up stuff and throwing it.
I realize that the ease of use with the new machinery, the technology is to go to a cart system. I can appreciate that, I appreciate the savings of people's backs from lifting up the garbage bags. I get all that. Can you tell me how much the bags, or the tags, might go up if that were in the mix? Or is that just completely out of the mix with waste management?
My understanding, and DBW Director Kim Benzey can correct me, is that it's not even being laid out as an option for us, but.
Most companies are moving completely away from any other system except for the carted collection. I think, to put it in real simple terms for the question you're asking, that under the old prices, it was about 45 bags a year was the break-even point with the 64-gallon cart.
I did the math, believe it or not. Way back when, I did the math.
And that was probably going to go down to break-even point of about 20 to 22 bags a year, which at that point, I think, just about everybody probably puts out close to 20 to 25 bags a year.
Yeah. Hmm.
Again, a question? Or should we just come back to you?
I have more concerns.
Okay.
Maybe you ought to stand there. May I? Or, no, please go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, we're still talking about bags. So that has, so that has not been, so I guess, even if the price goes up, are we still able to offer bags? I guess that's the other question. Could we go back and ask about that, for those residents who it's simpler to bring bags down than a cart down?
So the previous amendment dealt with going from bags to tags. Just to recap on the bags real quick, we are such a small market up here, getting, somebody to actually produce the bags right now is near impossible.
And I think we can use bags interchangeably with stickers in this conversation.
Okay.
Yeah.
They were not willing to take the bags anymore.
That was why we went to the tags. The tags themselves have had their own difficulties, I guess. We've had people try cutting them in half and sticking, you know, half on each bag. We've, we've had issues with the tags coming off. I mean, they work well if you actually wrapped them around the top, like we recommended, but a lot of people just stick them flat on the bag while, you know, at this time of year, trying to put a sticker on something that's hard plastic that moves like that, chances are that sticker's going to end up in the snowbank somewhere. So there were a lot of difficulties, even sticking with the tags. And as I mentioned, all the new contracts that people are moving to are going to the carts. And if you hadn't seen it, I don't know how much media attention it got, but the Marquette Township has now gone to fully carted collection as well.
So I think, Commissioner Larson, to answer your question, this is something I clarified earlier, too, is, so everyone's going to have to pay that, you know, cost of service fee, so basically, one cart for recycling, one cart for garbage. But you will be able to take bagged garbage to waste management, purchase a sticker there, and then dispose of it at waste management. So that option will be available to people, but you're going to have to pay that cost of service charge regardless. Is that?
No, can you explain that? The individual residents will have to pay the fee?
So everyone has to pay the base fee, right? And that includes the trash cart and the recycling cart, right? So, but my interpretation of Commissioner Larson's question was, can people still take their garbage in a bag to waste management and pay to dispose of it there?
So they would pay not only the $11 a month, they'd also have to pay for the bag, or the tag, whatever?
If they chose to do so. I would recommend using curbside garbage pickup.
My question was more of like, hey, you know, can somebody still, was there an option to have tags, continue with a tag, with, option to continue with a tag system for those residents who want to not have a cart, you know, at this, at this time, because of steps, or one bag a week, or something along those lines? Just like, you know, we're saying that you went from 45 bags, and now with a new price of service, you know, it's going to essentially double the cost, you for 45 to 22, or whatever to break even. Will those people still have the opportunity not to have a cart, but instead to buy a double-the-price tag? So, because it's a convenience issue of carrying it down as opposed to a cart? Does that, that's the question I'm not trying to ask.
No, we will be going to a completely carted collection, that's the option.
And it wasn't an option for waste management?
It was not an option for waste management.
That's the part that needs to be clarified. It was not offered in the contract at all, from what I was.
And as, and as the equipment we've been seeing with the trucks that have been upgraded, there is no longer that opportunity to throw a bag in the back. It is a cart that's hooked and thrown and dumped into the thing.
I guess the follow-up question to that, will they, so right now, that's what, they're putting it into a cart and then dumping it in, for those people that have bags?
No.
So they'll be getting new trucks, potentially?
What we're seeing is, that is why many of the other existing haulers require the cart system as well. Not necessarily saying the ones that we have here in the UP at this exact moment. I'm not, I can't confirm that.
We have weekly meetings, and maybe this will answer one of the questions from the audience there, too. There are two new trucks waiting to be implemented at service. They will implement it immediately for the recycling, and the second one when all the carts are implemented.
Perfect. Um, just a clarifying question, because Carrie mentioned a figure for cost per month. What is the difference in cost per month from the fee people are paying right now, if they are, say, on the bag system, to what they will be paying if they go to, when we change over to the cart system with this contract? Do we know that?
Do you have that off the top of your head, Scott?
It's currently a $6 increase, if you're.
Per month?
Per month, yes.
To go from, if you're having bags right now and you don't have them with the switch, you'll be paying $6 more? People that are already on the cart system, it will be no, no change, except for the 5% increase?
Yeah, other than the yearly.
Yep.
Yeah, contract increases.
But that's actually for future years. Currently, there is no increase that's going to be proposed for the rest of this year.
Okay. Commissioner, hold on one second.
It's just, I'm sorry, because I know that you have more concerns, but this is kind of related to that. And I believe I know the answer, but I just want to make sure that we're clear about it. Can a resident opt out of the garbage of the cart at all? Say, if there are two people live next door, and they use such little garbage, or can they join together and just have one garbage can?
They don't have to use the cart, they could take it to the transfer station. However, they would still be responsible for the base.
So there's no way a resident can opt out of garbage collection?
Correct.
So if you live in the city of Marquette, you will have to pay both the recycle fee and the garbage fee, whether you use it or not?
Similar to the readiness-to-serv fee that the water.
Yeah, and much like residents of the city of Marquette cannot opt out of using our water or sewer.
Yeah, I'm asking that because that's the question I've had.
Absolutely. Yep. I think it's important to realize that at one time, this was a city utility, and we have to continue to think of it as a utility, and that, that's what, you know, that readiness to serve comes from, is, you know, we're a package deal as a municipality.
Just as a side comment, I heard from one resident who was really thrilled that we do have both the recycle and the garbage, because in the previous place that she lived, they didn't have it, and was really appreciative that Marquette does have it.
Perfect. All right, anything else on the bags before I go back to Commissioner Gottlieb?
We are 60% utilization of the cart system, just so you know.
Which is great. All right, Commissioner Gottlieb, what you got next?
Where do I start? For the township, Marquette Township, has gone to a cart system.
Correct.
Marquette Township also allows a discounted fee for snowbirds. You can apply for a snowbird discount. I think it drops it from about 21 bucks to 16 bucks. Is there going to be anything like that, where you are, where people who are not using it for legitimate reasons are not here? Is that an option? Is that any way to work this into a contract through an opt-out system?
That would be a contract with us, or that would be something that we would be looking at our fee structure, from the city, or services that we allow or provide, versus what would be negotiated with waste management. I will mention this, though, that in the previous municipality that I was at as well, we did something similar. And we still had a base fee that they paid, but they did not pay the extra cart fee, let's say, for example, if you, if you compare it. So they still have a readiness-to-serv fee, because they are still able to utilize that service if they are not there. It is also a major burden for administration to manage.
I would imagine it would be. I am not doubting that.
Because we also have students as well, too. And so there is population variances throughout the year, that would be a very large undertaking that I would have to explore. But if you and the Commission would like us to evaluate that at some point, we could certainly do that, and come back with a recommendation.
And I would say, you know, since we have a And I would say, you know, since we have a uniform system throughout the city, I don't know how waste management would ever know who is paying their, you know, garbage can fee at that moment. Like, oh, this person came back in February instead of March, you know, and they put their cans out. They're getting a discounted fee at that point, but how, how do we know, right?
I appreciate what you're saying. I, it's not going over my head. I understand exactly what you're saying. And it's just, these are things that have come up, or Sally said she had some. These are just my concerns. I'm glad some other people have said other similar things. Realizing that the details will still need to be worked out, and should this pass with or without change, there are some things that I would like to see addressed at least ballpark here. Will there be a cost to the residents for the new carts? Or is that going to be just waste management is supplying the carts for free?
That question.
Two, or not for free, but.
Waste, waste management owns the green carts and they maintain them. So if a lid breaks or a wheel goes missing or whatever, it's up to them to maintain those carts for the residents.
So there is no new, no additional cost for the cart?
That is correct.
When would the mandated carts become available and how would they be distributed? There are some people who just don't have big black pickup trucks to go pick them up. I have driver priors.
I totally agree with you. They will be delivered to you, first of all. But there is a transition period. They would have to, the transition to full carts would have to be complete by September, but obviously, we would want that before then. We are working with, you know, the staff and department to transition and find that timeline, you know, the perfect timeline there. But we do want to keep in mind that we have spring. We also have students changeover of the seasons. And so finding some time where we can make sure that this is successful would be ideal. And I would assume that would be closer to the April timeframe and May timeframe when we start really seeing those carts come out. But there are not a lot of carts that are needed because we are past that sixty percent. So I know you wanted something specific at this point, but I don't want to put a date out there and then have everybody come at me when it's early or later.
No, honestly, I don't expect an exact answer. What I want is, are these things being considered?
Absolutely.
Can I go on?
There's, and if you would like me to also add on that one, if you want more than one cart at some point, if somebody wants more than one cart, maybe not you.
I don't even want one.
I, I don't even want, I know that. But if there is need for that, we will also make accommodations for, for something like that as well.
I, I am one of those guys who wakes up when the garbage truck is like five houses down or longer. And I like to get up and watch and see what they're doing. So I kind of get a kick out of watching them take my bag and throwing it in.
Then you're going to love that it moved to daytime.
Well, that's going to be a problem. That brings up my next concern. How will the city advertise the no parking on the streets during that area's pickup days? Since that area, for instance, I have no idea when Kimber Street's pickup is. And I'm sure you have no idea what day my street pickup is. How will we all know? How will the police know? And, and how will we know when we're not allowed to park there, especially if we're not from that area? How will the police enforce this? What will the fees be, the penalty be on parking during that time? How much impact is there going to be from this sudden loss of parking on the street during the summertime, during the day? How is this going to be implemented? I, I'm having a really tough time with this one.
I do not anticipate a, a, a mass appearance of signs everywhere. Let me reassure you on that as well, because that is something that's not going to be necessarily desirable or effective either. So we are looking actually at hiring a P R firm or looking at having a consultant come in to talk about communication and getting this information out in the most effective and efficient way as we move through this. Now, right now, we, we have specific parking bans during winter and looking at that similar thing for your collection day. However, it's going to change all the time. Unfortunately, it's only one day out of the week versus seven, and only a little bit longer as well, because the collection times should be complete by that two P.M., but more likely that noon mark. And there's only going to be certain areas that is really problematic, because not every road is wide or not every road is narrow. So I think that what we're going to be, be doing is looking at those targeted areas that perhaps are a little too narrow to even have one side of the street have parking and start, start with those streets now and look at that. And try to communicate with our residents, try to identify where they could be parking, and reach out sooner rather than late, later. The fine, then, for this would be set by the fee schedule, and we have not determined what that looks like yet, probably similar to the winter parking ban. But these are the things that we are really trying to work through right now. If I don't have to do a complete, you know, absolute parking ban in, on every street for collection day, then we don't want to do that necessarily. But we need to really be evaluating that now. Several ideas have been tossed out previously, such as one side of the parking, one side of the street has parking, but that's, you know, putting too much of a burden on the other side. Allowing parking to happen, but, but if we're moving towards daytime collection, we have more people also in the streets as well. And we're doing this for safety, not necessarily for ease of the collections or the, the waste haulers. This is really more about safety. So we're still trying to work through those details at this point. We wanted to get this, you know, in front of the city commission to, to consider first before we start spending a great deal of time on every single street at this point.
And, you know, none of us are, who work at the city are communications experts. We don't have a lot of marketing degrees hanging around. Our focus is on public policy, not always delivering the message. So I do want to emphasize that we are looking at hiring somebody to come in and help us deliver that message to all residents. We will be producing maps that show collection zones, much like we do, you know, currently with garbage collection and leaf collection and all that kind of fun stuff that we have different zones for. And, you know, I'm sure we can ask our G.I.S. administrator to produce a map in G.I.S. so you can get real exact, you know, and see in detail where your collection should be. But we generally don't have a problem delivering that to every home, you know, within our boundaries. And when people set up service, they'll receive that information there as well. So there's going to probably be a little bit of an adjustment period, but the community will probably, will get used to it. And then new customers, as they come on, will receive that information. It'll just be a part of, you know, wherever they end up moving in the city.
Waste management is aware of, you know, potential for, you know, some growing pains with that. You know, I think as, as been pointed out, you know, we'd really like to focus on the education side of things and not really look at trying to penalize residents as we work our way through this. Similar to the winter parking ban, they do a lot of work with, you know, getting flyers on windshields before they get real aggressive with ticket writing. And I mean, I, I think that would be the, the same approach that we would like to take is, is really focus on the, the education end of things. Currently, the, the hauler has a red tag system that they put on carts or bags if, if they're incorrectly placed now. Similar to that, we'd, we'd like to have flyers that they can put out and, you know, for people that have parked on a collection time. And I, I guess in my mind, one of the things that, that makes it a little bit simpler is, is you're going to see carts out in front of everybody's house when they're put out for collection. And, and once they're used to it, to me, I think it should be pretty evident at that point, even if, even if you forget, oh, all the carts are out. I got to make sure I park in my driveway tonight. So.
So currently, I mean, waste man, we, summer, we don't have a parking ban. And there's certainly streets that, you know, residential streets that are full of vehicles.
Have we heard from waste management that they do, they, they have complained about that?
We came to the city commission with that not too long ago, trying to introduce maybe a parking ban, extended parking ban for that. We have discussed that, extending it through even the summer months as well, but was not necessarily a, a well-received idea.
Right. I, I guess my, 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 my point is that they already do it right now in the summer months, and it seems to be going all right, even with carts and people parking on the street. Is it, or am I wrong?
No, not in the daytime.
No, no, right. Not in the daytime, but in the night, in the summer, there's still people that are parked on the streets.
That's how, yes. And there are other issues that we've experienced with things with bags being missed or carts being missed if they're blocked by a vehicle, or if the vehicle actually just blocks the carts altogether and has no access to that.
We do get a sizable amount of complaints when pickup is missed. And we very rarely can get a truck back out when, you know, someone just randomly parks in front of someone else's can or, or bag. It was, I mean, it's kind of inconsiderate. Maybe they don't notice. But if that collection's missed, they have to wait until the following week to get picked up.
But this would be more about safety, and we are anticipating more people that would be moving back into the street during the daytime hours, and then also driving down there as well. So especially on the way, you know, on Baraga, sometimes it's hard to get two cars to pass when there is a car in the, in, parked in the street, and then let alone a garbage truck as well.
We'd like them to be as efficient as they can so they minimize the time they're out on the streets, you know, especially with moving a little bit further into the day now.
Go for it.
Elders first.
Thank you. I, I think that we're, I don't think we're giving our citizens enough credit and how smart they are. It's not going to be that hard with a little bit of education and a little bit of trial and error. I've traveled the entire U.P. in northern Wisconsin almost on a daily basis, but, you know, I'm all over the place. And I've seen the transition of many communities go from one carrier to the next or different processes, exactly the way that we're going to do it now. And I'm quite sure that there's a best practice list out there or a, a series of educational cues that we can give to our community that's going to allow us to transition to this. I mean, you didn't haul your garbage halfway down your driveway more than once without having it said, you know, we're not picking it up because it's not out at the curb. You're going to haul it out to the end of the driveway the next time because you don't want to have that garbage for another week. One of the practices that I've seen is when it is time for pickup, one of the places that people don't typically park are in front of their driveways. And if you're a residential neighborhood, this is something that I would anticipate we'll see, where you put your garbage, either in front of your driveway or maybe where you'd normally park a car so that nobody parks there, in the street, on the curb, if, if those types of streets, you know, if it makes sense for that area. Like you said, city manager, we're going to have certain areas that are going to have to be addressed specifically, and, and they'll have to, you know, tailor their approach to it. But, I mean, this is, this isn't, it's not rocket science. And I think that, you know, we're just basically getting caught up with the rest of the communities that have already done this. It's a, it's a safety issue. It is a best practice. I think we get enough people in here on an annual basis yelling about the squeaky brakes at, at five or four in the morning, waking their kids up and keeping them awake in the middle of the night for, on school nights and, and things like that, that, you know, this is, this is the way that the world is going. And golly, with all the changes that are going on out there, this was an easy one. So that's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't think I necessarily had any questions, or if I did, I think everyone else is kind of taking care of them, though. It, it's just, it hasn't been lost on me that in the past, waste management has come, they've had whole PowerPoint presentations to us. And I'm sorry to our city staff that you guys have to field all these questions because they didn't come today knowing that this was not going to go well. And I don't think that's a coincidence personally, but. Somebody?
They weren't, they, I don't think they were going to be here at this point. I think we've been in constant communication with them as we go through. And I do believe that we have a lot more, I would say, the answers that relate perhaps maybe towards the things that we're hearing versus some, maybe some of the mechanical or the equipment ones, but.
They, they offered to come, and I guess we just felt comfortable answering the questions. I didn't think that was an issue.
I'll come slack on that point, then. So I, I think it's, it's just more commentary at this point, but, you know, they're requiring, so our residents are paying for this service. They're going to require all of our residents to have the full carts with the increased fee structure for people that, you know, are able to keep their waste down with the current system. They're going to have our whole system switched to daytime collection. We're paying for the P.R. plan to communicate all this. And in return for all of that, they're going to charge us an extra four and a half percent per year because they can. Like I said, I don't have a question. I just, that doesn't sit right with me is all. Thanks.
Commissioner Davis?
You know, this is one of those situations where change happens and you can't please everyone. And I think we've had enough complaints about people saying that they're awake in the middle of the night because of the garbage pickup. And those are the people that might accept this a little easier. But I think just kind of to wrap this all up, I'm wondering if, if we, if the city staff, maybe it's the manager, maybe it's one of the staff that can just kind of describe to us why, and I, and I do support this motion, by the way, why this might be the best alternative. If we do not approve this particular motion, what is the alternative and what are the consequences for looking at the other alternatives?
Certainly. So we are recommending a contract extension, obviously with waste management, with the intent to bid out at the end of that contract in five years. There has been quite a bit of movement within the waste hauling industry within Michigan and in the region. And with current trends in services, there really is no significant benefit that would be realized by going out to bid at this time. We had just implemented the recycling cart program, what, now going on two years here. And that was a big undertaking, especially for waste management to come in and, and also start servicing those carts as well. And then knowing that we are moving towards a cart system eventually, as it had been discussed in many years before that, of moving towards a cart system in the end, as we moved with that with recycling. So the contract extension does come with those, those changes. And I think you've summarized those quite nicely. But the trash collection is one of our most utilized and visible services, and that impacts every, nearly every resident on a weekly basis. There are growing to be bumps in the road. Those chances for something to go wrong are very high because it is a very visible and used service. So that's why we do recognize having that ample communication that's necessary. Now, what happens if we don't go forward with this? We have negotiated many of the things, especially when it came to, I would say, probably the collection times. We tried to keep that consistent. We wanted to have perhaps maybe one change at a time, maybe a little bit more tolerable. So looking towards maybe the cart system as more of maybe one of the bigger things to kind of tackle at one point, because that is more of a trend. And then keeping our overnight collection time. However, that was not something that waste management was able going, was able to accommodate. We also tried to negotiate, or at least tried to get some other concessions in there, such as trying to get all of the collections done before noon, but that would change the schedule. So there were other things that we were trying to maybe perhaps look at in order to kind of just keep this as simple as possible. And if we, I, I feel that if we don't go forward with this, we try to go out to bid at some point, then perhaps we would be very late in the game here, and we would be talking about a more painful process to transition. But we also are not aware of any other, we do have some other, other haulers in the area that have taken on bigger contracts, too, that could maybe potentially take over this contract. But now with the price that we have out there right now, we'd probably be looking at a very significant increase as well. So financially, we would be impacted, but then also the timeline for transition would also be impacted as well, and probably a lot bumpier. And that's from experience of switching from a waste, a waste hauler downstate.
I, I think we strongly feel that if we put this out for bid, we would only receive this one serious bid with a significant cost increase, but all the same terms. I would remind this commission that the last time we put out this contract for bid, we had two companies go after it. One was waste management that we ended up going with. The other was a company from out of state that probably could not legally haul our garbage because they were trying to take it to their landfill outside of the county, which is against the, the rules, against the law in this county. You have to haul it to the landfill and would have also destroyed recycling within the county. So. have also destroyed recycling within the county. So we look at past practice, yeah, the past bids that we've seen for this type of service and we've only received this one bid. We look at the current state of the market and we see that waste management is probably the only company that is going to be able to make a serious attempt at this. And if we were to put it out for bid instead of utilizing this contract extension, we'd see a significant increase in price to our residents with no real benefit. We'd have all the same terms that we're concerned about right now, but we'd just be paying more money for the privilege.
I think with one of the companies making the transition for another community, I think for them to give us a real competitive bid, they'd be better off if they got their feet underneath them after the transition in that community. We had checked with other communities and the pricing that they were getting and it was substantially higher. And I think part of that is, is, you know, a lot of those other communities, it's their initial transition to carts. As the city manager mentioned, I mean, we're already 60% carted on the garbage side. We are 100% carted on the recycling side already. And really in just having discussions with other haulers and just within public works, we really did feel that this would be the easiest transition to move to a fully carted system would be to just complete the last 30 to 40% of the carts with the current hauler.
Perfect.
Especially with the pricing that we did receive.
Just one last little thing and to address Mr. Dishno's concern about whatever is leaking off the trucks. You mentioned that they will be purchasing a few new trucks. Perhaps that'll take care of it, but I'm wondering if that's something that could be worked into the contract. I have no idea what they're spilling, how, if it's detrimental to the roads or, but I'm just wondering if we could give some consideration to that comment because I think it's worth listening to.
Absolutely. I do want to say that there's a way to report that. And then also now if it's going to be in the daytime, we will probably be able to see that a little bit more in real time versus waiting until, oh, that was from last week. And then there are some clauses in the contract for us to enforce any of those issues that we do have that go unresolved.
And I'll say, our office fields, some of the calls, we split it with public works and waste management directly for those leaking issues. And usually when we address it to waste management, they take, you know, a look at the trucks and they get it fixed. I guess they don't always realize it, but they're pretty good about turning around and getting those trucks fixed. They're really high wear and tear vehicles.
Useless.
I guess I could just add too, we have been in contact with Eagle and followed up on some of those complaints already. Eagle has actually made inspections of their trucks and that so that they have been making the repairs. As Sean mentioned, they are a very high wear type of vehicle.
I know that you have more, but I'm going to take just a minute to like wrap it where we're at right now. Looking at this contract, from what I have seen, they've given us an option. I really don't have any other option to put it out right now. This is going to be the best price we're going to get. I'm looking, I understand all of the concerns that we're having with, is this going to cost residents who aren't using as many bags more money? Right now, we already have a base fee on all of our things of $19 and some change, I want to say, is what it is that everyone pays for everything. This would put us up about $6 higher, which is not including the bags or tags that you would have been purchasing. No, I understand. What I'm trying to say is trying to change that isn't going to work right now either. I'm looking at, I know we're going to have issues with the parking. I understand that that is going to be a big hiccup and the city is going to have to find a way to make it work with residents, to make information come out, and that's something that's going to go ahead. And we will find a way to make it work because change, while never fun, happens and we find ways to work forward with it. So I'm not super worried about the parking situation. I do agree with the fact that trying to figure out what neighborhood has the parking ban, even without signs, I think I would just look for the green garbage cans. If there's a bunch of them out in the street, that's probably what I would go to with, that's probably where that parking ban is for that day as a good telltale sign. But we will find ways to communicate this with residents and make it work in the best we can. This obviously isn't exactly what we wanted. The city has worked very hard to negotiate this contract and has tried very hard to keep it the same that it was. And it wasn't something we were able to do. So I'm very confident in backing it up and finding a way to go forward with this extension. And then hopefully in five years, we have other options as well to compete with them, to keep the market value down so we don't see a huge increase at that point. That's what I would like to say. I know Commissioner Gottlieb had a little bit more that he wanted to say.
Sorry, yeah.
Oh, no, it's okay.
I would like to hear from police, public safety, about the increased expectation on them. Do we really have the additional people to handle one more task of ticketing or monitoring who's parking on the street? And then with that in mind, is there a way, if this is deemed too onerous for them, which I imagine one more task is going to be more onerous, obviously, is there a way to avoid ticketing for now and just do friendly reminders for X amount of time, let's say even six months or whatever, that you are not, we are requesting that you not park on the street, not here's a $20 fine because you're in the way?
So a couple of questions.
And I realize there was a whole bunch in there.
A couple of questions. If I miss one, you let me know. As far as the warning thing, we do a lot of that right now. We honestly do. We're not, it's not like we're making a buck. It's not, that's not what it's about. It's try to get people to, especially if we want to talk about the winter parking ban. We do a lot of warning. We do a lot of publicity through, a lot of mediums, a lot of mediums through the city, through the university. I mean, try to reach as many people as we can, as often as we can before we ever start ticketing. And then we just try to be consistent and be as fair as we can to everybody from that point. So as far as warnings and stuff, we can, we can direct our personnel any way we need to for that kind of thing. And that's obviously the best way. We always do that for the winter parking ban every single year anyway. And we never start, I guess I don't want to say never start on November 1st, but I mean, it typically, you know, we try to give people a lot, as much time as we can to get people on board. As far as being able to do this, we do have a parking enforcement officer that works Monday through Friday. And yes, right now her responsibilities are a little bit more concentrated with the DDA and the downtown area, but she also does check other parts of the city on a routine basis. And that could be something that she could add to her duties along with our day shift officers. And honestly, I believe what the city manager was talking about, there's going to be certain areas that will be a little more troublesome and it's just based on the streets themselves. Some of the streets are older. They're one-way streets. An example, High Street is a one-way street and there's parking on one side and it's a very narrow street. We run into the same problems when DPW in the wintertime is looking to remove snow. And if there's a car there, they can't even get by with their vehicles to even start to do things. So it's something that we would work through once again. And a lot of times you work through that stuff and people have figured it out. And just a few warnings, make, knock on the door and say, hey, can you move your car? We try to do all those kinds of things before we have to ultimately come down to whether it's issue a ticket or have to remove a car. So I don't, did I get all of them? I'm not sure if I got...
Well, one of them is, yeah, the law enforcement aspect. The other one is a commitment from the city saying, hey, we are not going to enforce, we're going to be polite and ask you not to park and not penalize with a monetary fine for X amount of time.
I do believe the plan with the city was that there's going to be an extended period of learning time. We plan on implementing it long before it has to be fully implemented in September so that we can get people understanding and moving forward. We don't intend on starting it and day one handing out tickets to everyone. This is going to be a learning curve for everyone. And I know that that was part of the plan that the city has written up for the parking. So I don't find that as a worry.
Call that a soft rollout.
Any other questions?
I was just going to add that currently, you know, waste management is the one that's putting the red tags out there now. And that's part of what their duty is to help get that message out there, whether it's continuing out with the red tags or a flyer that's underneath a, you know, wiper blade or something like that.
So you're saying one of the garbage folks will get out of the truck and...
They do it now. They do it now.
No, please hear me out. They'll put a flyer underneath the windshield wiper of the car that's blocking the road.
If they're blocking cans and that, yeah, yeah.
It would be not the police. In this case, it would be...
I think it'd be a group effort or a team effort to accomplish it. But yeah, the waste management currently helps with that right now.
We will do whatever is most effective, efficient, and is going to be educational as well. It's going to take a team.
Yeah. Any other questions? Suzanne?
I just want to point out that if this is something you're going to approve, you need to amend your motion to not only approve the amendment, but to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement.
That would be you that would need to amend your motion. Commissioner Gottlieb?
I know it's my motion. Now I'm trying to decide if I want to amend it or not.
Well, if you don't, it just gets pulled down and put by someone else.
Exactly.
You could always do it in two steps if you need to. Approve it and then have a second motion to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
How would I even amend the emotion, amend the motion?
If I could provide a suggestion here, you can also resend your motion and we can remake the motion, the full motion.
You could either do that or any other member could make an amendment. You could then vote on the amendment and then vote on the ultimate motion.
What's cleanest?
You amending your motion.
I'd like to amend my motion that should it be accepted that the...
Mayor and city clerk can authorize.
It authorizes the mayor and the city clerk to sign the amendment.
Perfect. Do we need to get a second on the amendment? Can I get a second on the amendment? Commissioner Larson?
Second.
Perfect. All right. Any other discussion? All right. With that, I bring it to a vote. All in favor, please say yes. Oh, sorry. No, we're, it's all in one, right?
This is the vote on the amendment.
On the amendment, okay. All in favor of changing the, or accepting the amendment, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Okay. The amendment passes six to zero. And now, all in favor of the motion, please say yes. Yes. All opposed?
No.
The motion passes five to one. All right. I gotta find where I'm at. All right. That brings us up to item number eight, purchase of leak detection equipment. City clerk, may I have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Marquette Water Department takes great pride in providing residents with clean and safe drinking water at affordable rates. Part of this pride comes from quickly restoring service when there is a system failure. When there is a known system failure, leak detection equipment can reduce the time it takes to accurately locate a leak and begin repair. By accurately locating the failure, the size of the repair can also be minimized. This type of equipment can also be used to locate previously unknown leaks. Part of the water system survey we complete with Eagle on the city water system covers water loss and unaccounted water. The complete meter changeout was very successful in making sure we were accounting for the water we produce by accurately metering the water. The leak detection equipment will be used in the summer to identify where the water system is losing water through leaks. We expect the same level of success in identifying water loss. Annually, the water distribution department makes upward of two dozen repairs requiring excavation down to the utility in order to repair. While every repair is different, staff conservatively estimates the return on investment for this equipment to be less than five years through minimizing staff time, resources, and restoration cost. If we actively identify unknown leaks, the ROI team will be shorter. With proper care, the equipment is expected to last 10 to 20 years. The water distribution department recommends the purchase of a Leak Finder ST and a Fisher FPI-D 2100 ferromagnetic locator from Batco Inc. based upon an objective review of the equipment required, peer review from other water operators, consultation with other municipalities, and finding the equipment to be accurate and user-friendly after using. As with most specialized equipment, a particular product can only be purchased from one regional vendor and there is no financial advantage to utilizing a competitive bidding process. Fiscal effect: A budget adjustment in the amount of $27,503.15 will be needed to fund the equipment purchase. There are adequate reserves to cover the budget adjustment in the water fund. Recommendation: Waive the bidding requirement and approve the purchase of a Leak Finder ST and Fisher FPI-D 2100 ferromagnetic locator from Batco Inc. of Parma, Michigan for $27,503.15. Alternatives: As determined by the commission.
All right, commission, do we have a motion on this? Commissioner Larson?
I move that we waive the competitive bid bidding requirement and approve the purchase of a Leak Finder ST and Fisher FPI-D 2100 ferromagnetic locator from Batco Inc. of Parma, Michigan for $27,503.15.
I feel like you deserve a round of applause for that. Good job. All right. Do we have a second? Protend Schlegel.
Second motion.
Perfect. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, please say yes. Yes. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. This brings us to our second, second public comment section of the meeting. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address if you haven't already at this meeting. Do we have anyone for public comment?
Sorry, I just...
Don't say sorry.
I just, I didn't hear anything about the size of the containers, if, where that was at in the contract and that's all. So if you could let me know, that'd be great. Thanks.
Absolutely. Sorry about that. All right. Any other public comment? All right. With that, public comment is now closed and that will bring us to comments from the commission. Let's start with Protend Schlegel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Having almost lost my voice this past week, I'm going to keep it real short, believe it or not. Happy New Year. That's all I really have for tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Mayor?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
I didn't think I had anything, but I do want to recognize Taylor Headmark for coming in and saving the day during that presentation. He, for those of you who don't know, he sits back there in a closet and just kind of takes care of our audio visual and does a wonderful job.
Perfect. Commissioner Gottlieb?
Nothing.
All right. Commissioner Larson?
I don't think I have anything either today.
That brings it to me. And I really don't want to break the streak, so I think I'm going to say no too. So that brings us, I believe that Karen already has the containers on her list, sorry, but if the city manager would mind addressing that in her comments or if she can, that would be wonderful. And that brings us to you.
Absolutely. So the carts, the size of the carts, the standard size is going to be that 64 and then obviously the larger one. I want to say this though, that we have just rolled out the recycling program with the carts, which not only just provided an easier, I would say easier way, depends on who you ask, to put your recycling out to the curb, but also encourages every household to recycle. Now, that's the important part is we are starting to increase the recycling usage here or the recycling products that we receive from the city here. And we would like to see that program continue. And eventually you should start seeing, the whole goal is to have less waste, less going into the landfill, and more recycling. That should be the goal. That's the intention of promoting that recycling. We are not there yet, I think, as a city as a whole. So for us to take that stance with the cart size right now and say just a smaller cart and force everybody to have less waste, I think would cause more problems at this point. But it is something that I do hear and I have, I do understand that we need to be promoting more of the recycling versus the waste. Does that make sense? I know that doesn't make you happy bar both. A simple nod like, I hear you. I want us to be that way as well. We're not there. We also have many families that have recently have experienced the fact that once you have children, not saying that children create a lot of waste. Wow, this sounds like you're going down that way. But once you start having a larger family, you also produce more waste, although there are techniques for that too. But it is what we're starting to see right now. So let us keep promoting the recycling, the proper recycling, and see if we can make those incremental changes as we go. And then sooner or later have smaller carts available and maybe smaller carts utilized.
So will they take away my 35?
So I'm hearing, so I think that there would be a resident that has a question that say, would they take away the 35 and exchange it for a larger one? I'm anticipating that question. Yes, I do believe that we would eventually get to that point, but I think I'm going to have to maybe perhaps look a little bit more at that and add that to our FAQs. Does that help?
Is there any...
I want to say thanks to Taylor as well. He is a hero that is not always seen and he does a lot more even than just keep an eye on this meeting and make sure we look good on the camera. He does a lot more on a daily basis. And so for him to stay extra long after on Mondays for these meetings is appreciated. And then he has those glory moments of saving the day. So thank you, Taylor. That is all. Thank you.
All right. With that, we are adjourned at 7:25 PM.